All right, good evening. Now I'd like to bring the regular evening meeting of the Township of Llanie Council to order. And welcome here. I see a few signs which are fine. Just make sure that you're considerate of those around you, you don't block their view, but no problem at all. Thank you very much. So first item on the agenda is adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Arnesson, and then Counselor Davis seconded it. All those in favor, opposed and carried. Next item is the adoption of the minutes, regular evening council meeting of June 12th. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Qualley, second by. Counselor Long, are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. No presentations, but there are three delegations, and the first delegation is Lynda Nash. If she can please come forward, and I'll just get the mic on. Welcome here. And you have five minutes. If you just, for the clerk, provide your name and neighborhood where you live. Thank you.
Yes. My name is Lynda Nash. I live at 215-9087th Avenue. I stand before you on behalf of the community of Walnut Grove to appeal to you, not only as our elected officials, but also as parents and fellow human beings. I ask you to listen tonight with an open mind, an open heart, and to set aside any differences. Let's all work together for the greater good, in this case, health and safety. We are respectfully requesting that 216th from Highway 1 to 88th not become a truck route. As we have presented many health facts regarding air and noise pollution, this will not be my focus tonight. However, do keep in mind that trucks produce large amounts of cancer-causing toxins. One truck also produces noise equal to 32 cars, enough to cause hearing loss over time. Safety is a real concern. Trucks cannot stop as quickly as cars. Trucks have more blind spots. If a truck hits a pedestrian, it is usually fatal, as the location of impact is the torso rather than the legs. Saying trucks will use this road anyhow is incorrect. I have consulted with truckers. They are required by law to stay on truck routes and to take the most direct route available. In most cases, this would be 200th Streets to reach Port Kells, Golden Year's Crossing, and the SFPR. If and only if 216th from Highway 1 to 88th were to become a truck route, would they legally be able to take this route? I wish to present a growing body of evidence to support our request. Number one, a one-page document outlining the problem, our vision, and possible solutions. Two, the ministry environments developed with care guidelines. Three, a copy of the drawing illustrating the 800-foot buffer zone that was originally planned to protect us. Four, the CTS study done by the township that states that noise from trucks will disrupt residents' lives and affect their quality of life. Dr. Christopher Carlestone's original letter dated January 3rd, 2017. A document obtained by the Freedom of Information Act whereby Graham Cross, a senior traffic engineer for the Ministry of Transport, states, "Strategically, it would be best for the ministry to ask the township of Langley to be more forthright on their traffic management strategies, to keep local, to keep non-local traffic off residential streets until the 192 interchange is constructed. Also, they should specifically address commercial vehicles on township roads and the safety adjacent to Les Coles des Voyageurs and Topham Elementary." Number seven, a letter written June 19th, 2017, by Marie-France LaPierre, the president of the Board of Trustees for BC's Francophone Schools. This letter strongly opposes the interchange. Number eight, the article regarding the David Suzuki film that uses Langley as an illustration of why Canada needs a right to a healthy environment, a federal environmental bill of rights. Number nine, numerous letters to the editors opposing the proposed truck route. Number 10, lastly, a letter of today's date by Dr. Christopher Carlestone whereby he states that his health concerns re this project have increased. It is his expert opinion that the project be halted pending a health impact assessment. I wish to thank from the bottom of my heart all the volunteers who went door-to-door gathering signatures, requesting that 216th south of 88th Avenue to the highway be restricted to local commercial traffic only. Young and old, working alike, working together for the greater good, I am so very proud of my community. I hereby present this petition, including the additional 94 signatures that have recently signed the online petition. You will find 1,724 people opposing the proposed truck route.
Delegate, and she has only a certain amount of time. You're taking away from her time.
I'm finished. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. If we could just, you're not finished. You're not finished. We still have the ability for counsel to ask questions, so you're not finished. I would ask that we would respect you.
Excuse me, I just meant to say I was finished with this. Thank you very much, Mayor Froz.
Counsel Arnesson would like to speak to you, or have a question or a concern or a comment. So it's Counsel Arnesson's.
Yes. Thank you very much. I really appreciate your coming tonight as well as hearing from the community. I really was struck by what you were talking about, about working together for the greater good, because I think that that is something that we all really care about and want to achieve. I was wondering if you had, based on your own personal information, you've mentioned a couple of things. So I know that there was an exploration about 192nd Avenue and making that a full-access interchange. Can you just advise what the current status of that is with Surrey and Moti, if you know?
My understanding is that that is a 10- to 20-year plan. It is not for the near future. And yet it is the most realistic and clearly the most obvious solution to the whole situation, to take the trucks right into Port Kells, the Simon Fraser Perimeter Road, and the Golden Year's Crossing. Why go through a residential area past schools at full speed? Why go past homes 25 feet away?
I had studied a bit about that proposition, and I know at one time it was supposed to be full access, but there was actually some pushback, I believe, from some residents who didn't want themselves to have truck traffic going by. And so I think it was a political decision to delay that until such point in the future, as it was determined it would, you know, be suitable. The other question that I had, actually, was about the health impact assessment. So I'm wondering if you could give us, who might not be aware about this, what that would entail in terms of something that we could undertake.
Well, I'm certainly not an expert. However, Dr. Christopher Carlestone believes, his expert opinion is that this is the gold standard for today's studies regarding air pollution, regarding the safety and the health impacts. You'll notice that the study that was done by the Trinity Consultants was actually, in fact, done nowhere near the schools or the road where the homes are located. It was done directly by the highway. And I have his letter of today's date, Dr. Carlestone, and he is still requesting a health impact assessment because the certificate being used for this project is 10 years old.
And just one final comment, I guess. I was very interested in the environmental bill of rights, because I understand that you've worked with the David Suzuki Foundation, and good for you, because I know that's being adopted in some areas across the country, and so presumably we might be in a position ourselves in order to adopt that. But just, the bottom line is that coming here, if the message tonight is keeping non-local traffic off residential roads, that's the bottom line, from your perspective.
Yes. No one is opposed to local commercial traffic delivering groceries. We respect that. We need truckers. It's all part of our lives that make us, you know, we get our goods and services this way, which is absolutely wonderful. It's just a matter of how it happens, and as long as health is honored.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Richter.
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. 1,724 signatures, that's a lot of signatures. I wonder, could you read out the preamble of what people signed, so we know what it is that they were signatory to?
Certainly. Petition summary and background. Residents in North Langley living in proximity to 216th Street will be at a significant risk of increased pollution, noise, and safety hazards due to the predicted large volume of commercial truck traffic associated with the 216th Street and Highway 1 interchange. The neighborhoods in proximity to 216th Street North include two elementary schools, Les Coles des Voyageurs and Topham Elementary School, two preschools, a daycare, a community garden, a township of Langley Park, and numerous residential areas. Residents do not want a highway-accessible major arterial truck route through these residential areas. Such incompatible land uses would put at significant risk the safety and health of all residents, including schoolchildren. The action petition for, we the undersigned, petition that 216th Street, south of 88th Avenue to the highway, be restricted to local commercial traffic only.
Great, thank you. And my second question was, you'd mentioned the environmental bill of rights, a Canadian environmental bill of rights. Does BC have an environmental bill of rights right now?
If we had an environmental bill of rights, I would not be standing here tonight, because we would have a legal right to a healthy environment. Unfortunately, without this right, I guess the bottom line would be that the government can legally harm our health.
Okay.
And so we really need this.
Now, in the course of your research, did you ever come across any municipalities or local governments that have adopted an environmental bill of health?
Yes. As far as I know, I believe Victorians, Richmond have, and there's a number of others. I believe it's 150 or 155 that have actually, you know, been very progressive and forward-thinking that have actually done this ahead of the federal bill.
Great. Well, thank you very much for coming tonight.
You're most welcome. My pleasure.
Well, thank you very much. There's no further questions from counsel. Thank you for presenting. Okay, and the next delegation is Mr. Chief, Counsel Kirk, please. Mr. Kirk, please, thank you. And then they'll have it for us. Thank you. Mr. Nathan Jones, and thank you for coming.
Thank you, councilors, your worship. My name's Nathan Jones. I live off of 216th on 92B Avenue. And I'm here speaking on behalf of my family and specifically my kids, because I just don't feel that their voices have been heard. And it's not as though I oppose infrastructure in all circumstances. I think when I look at the township, there are plenty of positive examples. What I do oppose is the unnecessary spending on infrastructure. And the question that I have, that I've been asking your staff as recently as last week, is why? Why an interchange? Why 216th as a truck route? And the answer I get back is the movement of commercial and retail goods into Walnut Grove, east of 208th, not Port Kells, not the Golden Year's Bridge. This is from your staff. It's to move into 208th and east. And yet I stand here, and I struggle this evening. I struggle to reconcile the fact that in the last 18 months, I want to make sure I get this right, the businesses have been opened, an ice cream shop, a tap house restaurant, a bead store, a candy store, a yoga studio, boutique clothing store, a gift gallery, a baby fashion store, a Mexican restaurant, a float house, a bakery, a home decor store, a real estate office, a dry cleaner, furniture and lighting store, and a mixed-use residential retail story, three-story tower in Fort Langley. And yet this council has now designated truck routes out of Fort Langley and into Walnut Grove where they're neither needed nor wanted. In that same timeframe, that 18 months, we've shut down a bylaw. That is a delta of tens of thousands of commercial and retail space. And yet this council, again, feels the truck route is needed through the heart of Walnut Grove. But for me, this isn't about truck routes, or car routes, or EV lanes, or HOV lanes, or stoplights, or stop signs. The challenges that we have here, they're not technical problems in search of a perfect interchange. These are moral problems, and they're rooted in the political differences between the movement of commercial goods taking precedence over the health and safety of the family and the children of this community. But something special has happened here. People have started talking. People have started asking questions. Friends and neighbors at the rec center, they're asking questions about your interchange. Students and teachers at the schools are asking questions about your interchange. Brothers and sisters at the churches are asking questions about your interchange. And the same question comes up time and time again. If this council does not represent the best interests of this community, then what interests do you represent? So I'm not here to say my family's safety is going to be sacrificed due to your complacency. But you know what? This neighborhood has woken up. This community has woken up, and the consciousness of this community has woken up. And the consciousness of this community, they will not rest. We will do everything within our personal and collective power to not only fight this project on the basis of its legality, we will fight this project on the basis of its morality for the health and safety implications that you have chosen and willfully chosen to ignore. So I'll leave you with a quote, because I like quotes. I think it summarizes it. "I am passionate," let's all do respect, this is from Bobby Kennedy, "each time a man stands up for an ideal or acts to improve the lot of others, or strikes out against injustice, he sends forth a tiny ripple of hope. And crossing each other from a million different centers of energy and daring, those ripples build a current which can sweep down the mightiest walls of oppression and resistance." This is the first ripple here, councilors, your worship. Thank you very much for your time.
There's no questions from counsel. Thank you. Okay, if I could have order, if I could have order, please, we have another delegation. Thank you. If I could have order, this is a council meeting and a great speech. Thank you very much for your presentation. I wasn't even able to, thank you for your presentation. We do appreciate hearing from you. There's another delegation, and it's Marilyn Fisher regarding AAA Senior Housing. Please come forward. And I would ask that people could refrain from the applause, this is a council meeting, and we like a certain amount of decorum. Thank you. Ms. Fisher.
Good evening, Mayor Froz, and councilors. Changing the subject just a little, is this right? My name is Marilyn Fisher. I live at 108-5475-201 Street in Langley. I'm representing AAA Senior Housing, a grassroots group of seniors advocating for affordable, accessible, and appropriate housing options for senior residents of the township and the city of Langley. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the notice of motion table by Counselor Patrina Arnesson on June 12th, 2017. I've previously had the privilege of speaking to you about the issue of senior housing, but it's been a while. I believe you have this afternoon been provided with a copy of AAA Senior Housing's 2015 reports of the Langley Senior Housing Survey and our senior housing survey, our senior housing summit. AAA would again like to recognize the importance of township's support of these two projects. The reports are available online and in local libraries if anyone in the audience is interested. Though we recognize that current market conditions have led to a critically, a critical reduction in the availability of affordable housing for all, seniors, particularly those without housing equity, are suffering and becoming hopeless and even homeless due to exorbitant rent increases. Though there is one very promising development proposed in the township which is designed to include housing for seniors, it will only scratch the surface of the need for affordable housing for all in the township. Lest there be any confusion, when we refer to AAA Senior Housing, we are not referring to for-profit or subsidized independent or supportive housing specifically, but to a range of affordable, accessible, and appropriate housing options to meet the needs and preferences of older residents in our community. Personally, and on behalf of AAA, I can't express how pleased I am to be able to support Counselor Arnesson's carefully crafted notice of motion. Its focus on steps to fulfill the intent of the township's 2013 housing action plan through the development of a clear policy framework to, quote, "ensure the fair and equitable delivery of some affordable housing benefit," end of quote. If carried through, the township will, I'm quite sure, find itself in an enviable and timely position to respond to opportunities which promise to become available through the Liberal Government's soon-to-be-released National Housing Strategy. In closing, I would like to quote from the last word of some seniors who responded to our housing survey. One said, "Even though stairs are a problem, I can't afford to live anywhere else. I only get $1,200 a month. Housing needs to be available for people like me." And he actually was referring to himself as an old fart. And then, you know, we've heard the famous, "location, location, location" as a selling point. Well, they've closed their comments by saying affordability, affordability, affordability is what mattered most. AAA Senior Housing respectfully calls on mayor and council of the township to adopt the resolution of Counselor Arnesson, to convene a council priority committee meeting to give full consideration to the recommendations she has made to fulfill the purpose of the housing action plan as it relates to the provision of affordable housing options. We also commend the policy inclusion of local stakeholders and potential housing partners through a formal engagement strategy. Thank you very much.
And you have a question from Counsel Qualley. Counsel Qualley.
Yes.
Thanks, thanks for being here. It's nice to see you. I just, I'm curious to know if the AAA Housing Group has had a chance to look at the draft plan for the Brookswood OCP that's before council right now?
Not carefully, but I'm coming to the open house.
Good. Well, I would hope that the AAA Housing Group could maybe put forward some suggestions or their recommendations around the OCP, around sort of affordability and accessibility to seniors. I think it's an important consideration as part of the planning of the municipality. So we had a delegation here this afternoon from El Scat, as I'm sure you're aware.
Yes, yes.
And so I challenged them with the same, with the same thing, to come tomorrow and have a look at the OCP and think about, you know, how that plan works for the seniors in our communities and affordability and accessibility for them.
As I said, I haven't studied it. AAA is in a little bit of a hiatus right now. But I do real, I do hear that you've made some allowances for the manufactured home parks in there. And if you'll look in our report, you'll see that we made several recommendations on that subject, which is really, the manufactured home parks contain all of affordable housing in the township for the seniors. So if anything happens to that housing, we have homeless seniors.
So the protections around the mobile home parks, council recognized a while ago how important that was, and brought in some significantly upgraded language in our bylaws around the protection of those folks who are maybe more at risk than others in our community, so.
I do appreciate that.
Yeah, so there's been good attention paid to that, but I'm just curious, you know, I'll be anxious to hear tomorrow if you have some comments about the OCP and how it sort of relates to the seniors in our community, because I think you're right, affordability and accessibility is really important.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Marilyn.
Thank you. I have another question, please. Counsel Arnesson.
Yes, thank you very much for coming, and thank you for all of the great work that you've done. I know that you have some collaborators with that. I just wanted to say from a point of view of the housing action plan in 2013, which actually predated my joining council, but one of the things that I think is sometimes a challenge, and I've spoken to our planners about this, is that sometimes we have policies which we adopt, and they're wonderful policies, but really how to animate them. You know, how do we come up with a strategy in order to make sure that we're actually implementing these? And personally, I can't think of anything that is quite equal, in a way. I mean, there's many different competing priorities that we have, but certainly to protect the most vulnerable in our community is certainly right up there. So I really commend you and your interest in that, and I look forward to seeing you as well tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I'll be there.
Thank you very much for coming out and presenting. Okay. All right, so now we move on to reports to council, and the first report is E1. It's development permit application number 100822, rest of properties. If I could have a motion, please. Counsel Long, second by Counsel Qualley. Any discussion regarding E1? Seeing none, I'll call a question on E1. Counsel, is on E1?
That's Esther.
Yes. I've called the question. Sorry, I called the question.
You called the question.
Okay, you're.
Don't we get public input on that?
Yeah, you, no, that's been done already. Sorry, if you look on the clerk's note, if you want to speak, I'll just cancel the vote. I'm sorry, I didn't see your name come up. But there is, public input was received on April 10th, and so one speaker spoke in support of related applications, so there's no requirement for public submissions. But if you wish to speak to it, sure, just let me get your mic on, please. Just give me a second, and I didn't see your name up there earlier. Okay, Counsel Richter.
I just had a question as to why the watercourses need to move.
Mr. Seffi.
Your worship, to accommodate detention facility.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call a question on E1. And that carries, Counsel Richter and Counsel Davis opposed. And move on to bylaws for first and second reading. F1 is residential sales centers, bylaw number 5293. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Whitmarsh, second by Counsel Davis. Any questions, discussion? Counsel Arnesson.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I'm looking at this as an opportunity to perhaps advance a discussion. Many times when I go through Willoughby, and I see that they have these lovely models where they're showing off the delightful features of townhouses, et cetera, but I'm struck by the fact that usually sometime later, when all the presales are done, they end up in a pile of rubble. So what I'm wondering is whether or not we can use this, as I say, as an opportunity to consider taking these and utilizing them for something else. Now, it may be that they're not designed for that at the moment, but I think that good stewardship in terms of the environment and our homelessness might suggest that we might consider utilizing these for another purpose. It just seems very wasteful for us to be taking that. I know it's an internal cost to the business, but why don't we look at an opportunity to take it and use it for something that is of societal benefit, such as housing, or, you know, at the very least, something else that a community group could use instead?
I take that as a suggestion. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll call the question on F1. That carries unanimously. Move on to F2. This is resigning application number 100464, Blau Triple J Poultry Farm Limited, and it's bylaw 5289-5290. Could I have a motion, please? Get this on the floor. A motion?
I'll move to defer.
Counsel Whitmarsh moves to defer, to defer to.
I'd like to move to.
Hang on, let me, let me get you on here. If you're, hang on. Where's Whitmarsh? There you are. Okay. So motion to defer.
I'd like to have this.
I'd like to have this.
Just to get my clarification, and I'll ask for a second. To defer to what?
So I'd like to have this deferred until after the third reading of the Brookswood OCP Minor Update.
Second by Councillor Richter, Councillor Long?
Yeah, I was going to suggest a deferral, too. I'm not sure if that would be the appropriate time. I guess it could be. I was going to suggest we defer it to the next meeting, and then we can see when that is, and it could be deferred further from there, but I still support a deferral, because I think we're in the middle of a process that affects this application, so we should see a deferral. So I might, I'll listen to the discussion on this deferral, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh, you're okay. Councillor, do you want to speak to it? No. Councillor Richter?
Yes, I think a deferral is an excellent idea. It makes little sense in my mind to push this through right now on the cusp of the public hearings for the new Brookswood Fernridge OCP. I'm, I, I know in the new OCP, there are more protections there for trees and wildlife corridors and so on. It concerns me in the application in front of us that of the 204 trees that are on this property, 195 will be eliminated, and that, I find that very upsetting, particularly as one of the visions for the new OCP is a community surrounded by towering conifers. So we need to keep some towering conifers down there. So thank you very much, Councillor Whitmarsh, for putting the deferral forward, and I absolutely support it.
Thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I think that, you know, this, this plan that's put before us, I think it meets, looks like it, it certainly meets the 1987 OCP. It looks like it would meet the, the revised 2017 OCP as it's been presented to us thus far. But I, we do have a public hearing on this tomorrow night, and so I think it's important that we hear from the public on the Brookswood OCP Minor Update and see how that goes and get the information from the public on that before we make any kinds of decisions on this particular plan. So even though maybe from the outset it looks like it might meet both of those plans, I think it's important we hear from the public first, and so that's why I'm asking for it to not be heard in, for first and second, until we've heard, come to third reading on the Brookswood Minor Update.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And third reading could come as quickly as two meetings now if third reading, I'm sorry, this could come back as quick as two meetings now if third reading, if the agenda's altered to put this after third reading. So it certainly could, could come back sooner. Councillor Long?
Well, just to follow up on my original comment, then, would July 10th, could we not defer it to July 10th and then see what happens when we hit July 10th?
So July 10th would be the, the next meeting. Public hearing for the OCP update is tomorrow. That'll come for third reading on July 10th. If council wishes to consider, the, the agenda could be altered to have third reading come prior to this first and second reading. That'll be, council could consider.
And I think.
So we could still accommodate it being on the agenda on July 10th.
And I think if there was, if there was some issue with the third reading, and I don't want to predict what happens, that it could always be deferred again.
Exactly.
So that's, I'd like to make that amendment.
So the motion, the motion does state after third reading, so it depends on when we have third reading, so it could be on the same night as third reading if we just altered the agenda. And council always has the opportunity to defer again. A motion comes on the floor, council has that ability. Mr. Backen.
Your worship, I think what I'm hearing is council would like to see this perhaps at the next meeting or the meeting where the third reading is considered, perhaps as an item from a previous meeting as opposed to first and second reading. So we'd simply record it there, and then that would be after that takes place.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, Councillor Fox.
I like the way the motion, the original motion, the deferral motion that Councillor Whitmarsh has put forward. It's my preference.
Thank you. Councillor Richter?
I'm not sure I understand what we're voting on here. I don't understand the need to rush this through as soon as possible. I think that there are some, some time, there should be some time that passes between when we give third reading, and we don't even know if this OCP will get third reading on the 10th of July. So I'm wondering, are we voting on the motion that Councillor Whitmarsh put forward, or are we voting on what Councillor Long has said, that this come back on July the 10th?
Councillor Whitmarsh has put a motion forward to defer this until third reading has been heard on the OCP update. That is the motion that's on the floor.
Okay.
So that, and council has the discretion at that point to do whatever they wish with it, if they wish to defer it longer, but that was, you know, at least a bit of a stopgap. It puts it ahead a little bit, and we can consider, and you're right, third reading may or may not pass, and may, there's, there's a lot of things that can happen to third reading, but council would deliberate on that on July 10th, is my understanding, and then council can then decide what to do with this. Mr. Backen, does that summarize it? So we still have that option, we're not limited.
No, no, what's not clear is if we vote on this motion now, as it's worded, are we saying bring it back on July the 10th? Because if that's what we're saying, I'm not in support of it.
That's fine. What we're saying is after third reading, so it could be as early as July 10th. That's what I'm saying. So that's what this motion says.
No, that's not what this motion says.
The motion says to come after third reading, we're not putting a date on it, but it could be as early as July 10th, based on the council calendar. Is that correct, Mr. Backen?
In theory, that's correct, your worship.
Thank you.
And why would it have to be July 10th? Why couldn't it be the following July meeting?
It could be, I'm just saying that's the earliest that it could come back. It could be 2019.
But is, are we giving direction to staff tonight by what you're saying here in this meeting, that we want them to jig the agenda?
Not jigging the agenda.
So that this will come back right after, immediately after we give third reading?
It may very well be that, and that'll be up to council's discussion. It could be put on as an item from previous meetings, as Mr. Backen has said, and that would be my recommendation at that point. Then we fulfill the, the objective of this motion if it passes, and then council can determine what they want to do with the motion at that point. But that is the direction of this motion, and, and this motion still has to have a vote, whether or not it passes or not, we'll carry on from there.
Okay, so is it coming back on July 10th or not? Yes or no? No.
I would assume, I would assume that's the earliest time it could happen, and I think there's, there may be a willingness amongst some councillors to bring it back then, and certainly it could. And so that may happen. So you can decide if you want to vote for this or not, but the motion is to bring it back after third reading, and it could be as early as next meeting. And I would assume that, based on what Mr. Backen said, it will be on the agenda.
Then that's not right, and it's not fair, and we shouldn't be rushing stuff through this quickly on third reading of a new OCP.
Fair enough. Thank you. So any other discussion? Seeing, oh, Councillor Long? Oh, that's your.
I just want to reiterate, your worship, nothing's getting rushed through, okay? So I mean, if it came back, which is the soonest it could come back would be July 10th, it would still be only on for first and second reading, so it would still have to go to public hearing and everything else. No one's rushing anything through, but it's being deferred from now till, till after the third reading, and I'm going to support the motion that's been presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call a question on F2, and that is the deferral. And that carries with Councillor Richter opposed. And so now we move on to bylaws for first, second, and third reading. And G1 is Bylaw Notice Enforcement, Bylaw Amendment, Soil Deposit and Removal, Bylaw Number 5292. Could I have a motion, please? Oh, I was unanimous. I'm going to take Councillor Davis, I was so close, and Councillor Fox, I think you echoed.
Councillor Fox was in charge of there.
Yeah, Councillor, yeah, okay. Davis, Fox, seconds. Discussion on G1. Councillor Arneson.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Through you to staff, I have a question, because unless I'm missing something, it seems like all of the fines there are $500. So I'm wondering, is there any legislative reason why some of them could not potentially reflect something that is of more serious nature? Some of them seem to be very administrative in nature, and some of them seem to be potentially very damaging. So I'm just wondering what the reason that would be.
Backen.
Your worship, under the municipal ticket information bylaw system, $500 is the maximum that can be levied after acceptance by the chief judge of the provincial court of B.C. under that system. The reason for that is that that system allows only for bylaw adjudication in the event of disputes. If there's anything that's more, more, I guess, onerous than that, it's intended to go to a fuller trial. There are provisions in various legislative, I guess, pieces of legislation that indicate fines could go up to $10,000, but there has to be actually a, a court process that's utilized, so that would mean actually submission of a, of a summons, it would mean trying prosecution with a prosecutor, a trial, and then a decision. Those systems have been used historically, but with little success because, with minimal success, because the judges that are in charge of that system often equate the fines that municipalities suggest to other fines, which are traditionally lower, so we quite often see them reduced. So yes, it exists as a theoretical possibility, but the township generally uses the MTI system because it can levy up to $500 per infraction per day, which accumulates quite quickly. Otherwise, it's a very expensive and lengthy process because of the court system that becomes, becomes involved.
Okay, thank, thank you for clarifying that. So that means that each and every day that this infraction is happening, that that will attract a $500 fine for all of those?
And yes.
It, it can, okay. Because some of them are in a higher, higher order, I would say, of seriousness, so that's good to know, and I understand on balance, you want to make sure that you have a policy that's, that's reasonable and is going to be fairly applied. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Qualley?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Frost, to staff, Mr. Backen just answered one of my questions, that the fines are levied each day. And I wonder, unpaid fines, are they processed against the property taxes, so somebody would have to pay those fines before they could sell the house, or?
In many cases, yes. Under the MTI system, there's a process one can take after the adjudication process is complete to actually register them on title. That does require effectively ratification from a judge, but quite often what we do is we take those fines, we bundle them up, we get judgments, and then we file those against the property itself. It's a, it's a relatively expensive process, but we do tend to achieve more revenue than we do expenses in that circumstance, and then the deterrence remains significant, because of course, the cost, the court process itself is borne at least partially by the, by the party that's breached the bylaw.
So we couldn't recover those court costs fully?
Only a small percentage.
Okay, so, so hopefully that would prevent some, or at least provide a disincentive, I guess. Thank you for clearing that up.
Thank you. Councillor Long?
Thanks, your worship. This whole explanation, your worship, that Mr. Backen gave about the $500, does that apply then to a tree bylaw as well? Or all of our bylaws?
It effectively can apply to all of our bylaws. There are some challenges to have repeated levying of the fines if there isn't an attempt or a process or time period within which the party has the right to rectify the situation. But if there's no attempt to rectify the situation, no discussion, no dialogue, that's when we're able to actually indicate the fines by day per offense.
But if you cut a tree down, once the tree's gone, how can you rectify it? You can't really put it back up. And just thinking in terms of trees.
Trees are a challenge, however. Generally, what goes along with the fine itself is also going to be the implications on development, because do you remember that the bylaws focusing on development issues, we are not yet tackling the issue of non-development issues because of the Agricultural Land Commission and other areas where we have no jurisdiction.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Councillor Fox?
Yeah, just to say, in holistic context, I certainly welcome this particular document coming forward. It's been a while, but I think that going back to Councillor Arneson's point, $500 doesn't seem like a lot, but it's certainly substantially more than what we've had available to us, and the tools, in the toolkit are certainly more comprehensive than what has been there in the past. And so we haven't heard a lot about soil deposit infractions lately, which is a good thing. I think our staff are doing a great thing, and I hope that this gives them all the tools and the toolkit to be able to continue to do their due diligence on this file.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on G1. Carries unanimously. Move on to G2, and this is Hobby Closing and Dedication Removal. It's an amendment, Bylaw 5295. Councillor Davis, second by Councillor Fox. Any discussion on this? Councillor Fox?
So, if I understand this correctly, the land title office denied the registration of the bylaw that accompanied that bylaw due to a discrepancy in the survey. So this is actually an old file that's come back to us. Is that correct? So really, it's, it's just correcting an inaccuracy in the original submission?
Correcting, it's correcting a surveyor's error, and so it came back, so the bylaw has to go through the readings again.
In the legal description, it wasn't as to the area itself, but it was in the legal description of the property.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So thank you.
Any further questions, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on G2. Carries unanimously. And move on to, there are no bylaws for consideration, third reading, so we go to bylaws for final adoption. I1 is Aldergrove Community Plan Amendment, Application 100138, Bylaw 5283, moved by Councillor Qualley, second by Councillor Long. Discussion on, worth reading. Councillor Richter?
I just had a question. I couldn't help but notice how quickly this has gotten through to final adoption, because we just gave it third at the last meeting. I, I mean, it's great that it's gone through so fast, but I'm just wondering, how did it manage to do so?
Your worship, it's an OCP amendment, not a rezoning itself, so in theory, we probably could have done third and final reading at the same time. This, however, is simply the OCP, it's not the actual land use.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll call the question on I1. And carries unanimously. Move on to I2, and this is Aldergrove Community Plan Amendment, Application 100136, Creeckland Park Developments, Bylaw 5282. Could I have a motion, Councillor Qualley, or Councillor Long, and Councillor Qualley second. Any discussion? Councillor Richter?
I still think medium density around a park where there is no other amenities around there whatsoever is not the best place for medium density.
Thank you. Councillor Fox?
Well, in, in actual fact, I think it, it will fit that neighborhood because, what, as I understand it, is they're looking at masters on the main with side-by-side garages, which are extremely popular, and which there's absolutely none of in the community. So they've, actually, the feedback I've got is, we need those, and I'm not saying we personally, I'm saying the community has a desire for those, for those people that are closing in on downsizing or retirement, and they're looking at that as a particularly great asset, because there's nothing like that in, in Aldergrove at this point in time.
Thank you. Councillor Long?
I was going to concur, and it's also right next to the community park, so I mean, it's, it's, it's right, right there where you can walk, walking distance to all kinds of amenities, not to mention the two schools, so, anyway, I think it's good.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call a question on I2. Carries, Councillor Richter and Councillor Arneson opposed. Move on to I3, this is Smith Neighborhood Plan, Bylaw 5265 and 5266. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Qualley, second by Councillor Fox. Discussion on the Smith Plan. Councillor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I have a question through you to staff. I just want to assure myself that as a condition of approving this plan as it is, that at the time that the township considers to adopt any new changes to the energy step code, that that will be reflected in the standard that is going forward in, in the, all the buildings, actually, within this new neighborhood plan.
Mr. Saffie is indicating an affirmative.
That's a yes. My other question is then, because I had wanted to put something forward, but I don't want to do it on the fly. So it is, is it still acceptable to put something forward with respect to electric vehicle charging stations, to kind of quantify them? Can I do that after the fact?
Mr. Saffie?
Yes, your worship, it could be done as part of a development application that might come through.
Okay, so that would be as a part of maybe a subdivision, for example? What about a blanket kind of number? Like a percentage of maybe 20% of the parking spots in commercial buildings and a certain percentage in the residential?
Your worship, that could be done either at this stage or as a separate motion to be considered as part of the, I guess, the zoning bylaw, or, as I said earlier, as part of an individual development application that might come forward.
Okay, thank you. I, I think I'll do it separately at another time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Long.
Thanks, Your Worship. Now, on this issue of charging stations, there's some new provincial regulations or some movement in the strata field to try and allow more access to charging units to residents, right? Sometimes there's opposition from stratas and so forth. So, maybe we could get some update on that, because I think that it can be an impediment to existing strata developments. For example, that the strata doesn't want to install these things, but I think that there is a movement, that there'd be more access given to those that own those vehicles. I don't know if there is anything readily available, but I think we should look into that before we start putting it into our bylaws, you know, to either support the concept or to, you know, to give us some alternatives to look at.
Thanks. Is there, Mr. Seffy, is there any movement by the province on the B.C. Building Code to include this in developments, in multifamily developments?
I'm not sure, Your Worship. We'll have to take a look at that and do some research.
Yep. Call something from earlier. Councilor Arneson.
Actually, further to that, this information was something that was adopted in Ontario, so that's a standard that they have now included in their building code. And just most specifically, what I've heard from going to Metro, and this is a new neighborhood with new buildout, and so I think it's really important that we're doing this proactively, because what's happening in some areas is apparently they don't have appropriate infrastructure anymore to do it in older neighborhoods. And that's becoming challenging, because with all the infrastructure that they have, they have to consider whether or not, if they were to put this forward as a policy, whether or not it's actually obtainable from a hydro point of view. So, I think, I don't mind bringing this forward, and at that time, maybe staff would have some further information. Currently, what I was going to bring forward does not address multi, well, it does multifamily, but it's more having to do with commercial and detached homes, so that's just, I'll do it at another date.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on I3. Move on to I4. Official Community Plan Amendment and rezoning application, 100130, this is bylaw 5176 and bylaw 5177. Motion, please. Councilor Whitmarsh, second by Councilor Fox. Discussion on I4. Seeing none, I'll call the question. Carries with Councilor Arneson opposed. And now, we rock it right into the mayor and council report. Let me dig it up here. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome here. On June 13th to the 19th, I had the opportunity to visit South Korea. I was fortunate enough to visit that beautiful country in Seoul this month, and had the opportunity to meet the second Vice Minister of Foreign Affairs, Mr. Cho Han. Korea is an amazing country that is rich in culture and has all the 21st century luxury of a modern city, from bullet trains to naturally beautiful green spaces in the heart of Seoul. Had the opportunity to visit their Rural Development Administration, which is a very large, brand-new rural research facility and education center, and they're being very proactive in all of their farming. They don't have a lot of land there, but they farm it very effectively and have a lot of outreach, a lot of research. It was a great opportunity to meet with them. On Monday evening, on June 19th, this day I flew back, and later in the afternoon, I attended a meeting hosted by School District 35 regarding kindergarten to grade 12 entrepreneurship program, where the school district is looking at incorporating programs to educate young people on the art of entrepreneur entrepreneurship. And a great program they're doing, and they want it integrated into their program, so they asked for some stakeholders to attend this workshop. On Tuesday, June 20th, was the groundbreaking of the new youth hub located at 2028562 Avenue. The Langley Youth Resource Center will place the current youth hub operated by Encompass Support Services Society. Approximately 80 youth visit the site to access health services and a hot meal. The new five-bedroom modular home, modular structure, will offer more programming space to youth seven days a week, providing a safe space for vulnerable youth to seek counseling and medical services. The province is providing approximately $355,000 for the project. The township at Langley is providing the land, valued at $450,000. An initial funding of $18,000 was also raised by local students who continue to raise funds through a youth homelessness task force operated by the Langley School District. And as this is a modular facility, we expect to see this up, what, in July or August? Councilor Fox?
Yes.
Yep.
No, it'll be September.
September finished, but the structure will be up, so September finished, so it's going to come up very quickly. Later that morning, I visited Langley Senior Secondary School, where I presented one of the township's scholarship awards to Cailum Dyke. Cailum was very appreciative of the award and is looking forward to attending BCIT, where he will pursue his plumbing certification. On Tuesday evening, was the 86th Annual General Meeting of the Greater Langley Chamber of Commerce, where City of Langley Mayor Ted Schaefer and myself assisted with a swearing and ceremony for the board, and we welcomed Jack Nicholson as the new chair. Jack Nicholson is the CEO of the Otter Co-op. And congratulations to all of the new board members and the returning board members, and thanks to those who served and have stepped down. On Thursday, June 22nd, Langley M.L.A. Mary Pollock invited Mayor Schaefer and myself to attend the throne speech in Victoria. It was a very interesting process, and we look forward to the next days and weeks as it unfolds in Victoria. And if anybody has any answers, please let me know, because I have no idea. But it was an interesting throne speech. On Friday, June 23rd, I welcomed some 600 guests to the opening ceremonies of the 146th Grand Lodge of Free and Accepted Masons of B.C. and the Yukon at the Coast Hotel. We provided, and I know they were here from all over British Columbia, and some from other parts of the world, and we provided some great weather for them while they're here. Then was off to the Fraser Valley Quilting Guild's 40th Anniversary Celebration at the George Preston Recreation Center. There is amazing work displayed, a lot of quilters, they came from all over, to all over the Lower Mainland and Fraser Valley to display their wares, and I was there with our finest. And standing next to, that's an original from early days in the RCMP, a buffalo robe that they used to, they used to give to all the members. I'd hate to be in the area where they had to wear that thing, because it looked pretty warm. When it's wet, it must weigh about 9,000 pounds. On Saturday, June 24th, was a community appreciation social put on by the film industry in Fort Langley. Langley is a very popular destination for filming, and we thank the industry for hosting this recognition and appreciation event, where 150 attended in the afternoon. In this photo is Creative B.C.'s Film Commissioner Sandy Richter, Richter Cooper, and Creative B.C.'s Motion Picture Industry and Community Affairs Manager, Marnie Orr. And there was 11 different organizations in the film industry who came together to just say thanks to the community of Fort Langley for the filming activities there, and it was a great event for the first one, and I look forward to more. On Saturday evening, was the 2017 Women's World Taco Football Championships Opening Ceremonies at McLeod Park. There are six teams competing from Australia, Finland, United States, United Kingdom, Mexico, and Canada. On the opening night, Canada played Australia to a 31-6 victory in the opening game. We had the official Canada 150 flag raising this afternoon, and as we all know, coming up this week is Canada's 150th birthday, and congratulations to Canada. It's a milestone, there's going to be lots of activities. I don't know if we have a picture of that. There it is. There's the big flag raising. And so, that's flying proudly at our, just out front here. So, it's lots of activities coming up on Canada Day. Ask, you know, ensure everyone can take the time out from the Willoughby Park to the museum to the National Historic Site at Fort Langley, and then all throughout the community, there's going to be some events. Acting Mayor Whitmarsh attended several events on my behalf over the past couple of weeks, and we have some photos to show, and he can provide comments. So, Councilor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, so the picture on the left is at the B.C. Farm Museum. They had a special day there to celebrate the painting of some new murals that, throughout the Farm Museum, which look incredible by extremely talented B.C. artists. And so, I was given the opportunity to cut the ribbon of this expansion of their, and new renovated basement area where they can do a lot of work there. A number of other councillors joined me on that day, Councilor Fox, Councilor Arneson, Councilor Long, and Councilor Richter. We're all at that event. On the right-hand side is the Isoasis groundbreaking, so we painted orange, so we didn't actually dig our shovels into the asphalt, but we painted orange where the new cat intake and isolation facility is going to go. And so, that was a great event for there. And Councilor Qualley, she provided the food and refreshments for the event, so that was fantastic. Now, I don't know if there's other pictures or not, but also attended a number of graduations, Langley Senior Secondary, Langley Christian, and RE Mountain, Brookswood's coming up this week. And then, photo here on the left is just from yesterday, the Langley Special Olympics Walkathon. And so, there I am with Christine Matheson, and this picture was taken by Christopher Lacusta. They're both, Christine and Christopher are part of the Special Olympics Athlete Council, and so that was a picture they had at the track as they were engaged in part of the Walkathon, so it's great.
Thank you for doing that. Councilor Fox.
I just wanted to go back one slide, if we could. The picture on the left there is the new machinery and woodworking shop at the Museum of B.C. Farm Machinery Museum. But if any of you have not been to the B.C. Farm Machinery Museum to see these murals, they are above and beyond great. They're spectacular. The artistry that has gone into them, the pictures, the work that has been put forth is world-class, and I mean world-class. I have to commend these people at the B.C. Farm Machinery Museum. If you take children now, they've got interactive modules at certain, at certain displays, and so on, so it's extremely educational. But these murals are definitely worth a visit, and on July 1st at 10 o'clock, we do the flag raising. So, if you want to get down and have a fun time on July 1st, they, next door to the museum, are exactly what you want to do with your family, having cake and enjoying both the museum and the Farm Machinery Museum in one fell swoop, so. I know, I know the councillors that were there, I think beside me endorse that context of those, the beauty of those pictures.
You mentioned Canada, did you?
I did. July 1st.
So, the next picture, you're standing there, if we move up to the, oh, the other way, the other way. There we go. And there, on the right, Councilor Fox. Is that awards?
Those are, yes, those are scholarship awards, Township of Langley Scholarship Awards.
Okay, excellent.
At D.W. Poppy.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you. And just, yeah, just on the, going back to the throne speech, and I know we had a discussion on vehicle charging stations, and then when you said that, I thought something was twinging, there was something in the throne speech, and I looked it up. So, and this is probably a goal of all the parties, so whoever forms government, certainly we'll see, but it says your government is committed to an ambitious emissions-free target for all new non-commercial vehicles registered in Metro Vancouver by 2035, advancing the previous goal of 2050 by 15 years. So, that's less than 20 years from now, that there's a goal, so we'll see what happens with that. And then further down, they say that they are, want to invest 50 million over the next five years to fund a significant expansion of vehicle charging infrastructure throughout the province, making B.C. number one in Canada. So, it's just a couple of things out of the throne speech, and we'll see where that goes, but certainly in the direction. And so, when we see new housing coming up, certainly important to see that infrastructure put in place. So, upcoming events, Canada Days, as I said, Fort Langley and Willoughby Community Park, and I know there's other, I was reading in the paper, there are other communities, Alda Grove, the Legion are having an event, I believe in Brookswood, there's going to be an event, a lot of events to celebrate Canada 150 on Canada Day, so encourage everyone to take part. So, with that, that's our report. Now, is there anything else to add from council? Move back to the agenda. Councilor Richter.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I had the opportunity to attend the Canadian Water Summit last week, and what a fascinating experience that was. I brought back some things for council, and a big stack of reading material from Mr. Seffy, which I'll give to him after the meeting. The, one of the keynote speakers was the Environmental Commissioner of Ontario, and she was talking about the environmental bill of rights that Ontario has, so I brought everybody back a booklet on that, and maybe that's something that we want to look at encouraging to happen in B.C., or maybe even doing one locally. The other thing that I brought back for everyone on council was a button that very proudly proclaims, "I drink tap water," which I think in reflection of the hard work that our staff do to keep our waters safe and secure. It's maybe something we should all wear with pride. But some of the key points out of this that I wasn't aware of, and I quite frankly had my eyes opened, the very first keynote speaker was Glenn Murray, who's the Ontario Minister of Environments and Climate Change. And he said that climate change is the most difficult and important factor in water right now, and that we're going to have to start dealing with water in a way that we never have before. Apparently, Stephen Hawking said a couple of weeks back that human beings will not be on this planet by the end of this century, and that we are now living in what Glenn Murray calls the era of acceleration. The speed of change is so fast that humans can't keep up, and species can't adapt. And so, he had a call to bring science out of science and start getting it more into the public realm, because what is happening is we're seeing more and more of these one-in-900-year events, particularly droughts. And something that I wasn't aware of was that all the instability and problems that have been facing Syria was caused by a drought that started in 2006. And it was a five-year drought, which means it's a one-in-900-year event. And because of that drought, 80% of crops failed, 1.6 million farmers left their farms. They moved away from the drought areas into the surrounding communities, which, of course, caused political unrest and has eventually resulted in the war that's going on there now. And Syria is not the only one that's afraid of what climate change is doing. In fact, the Pentagon now considers climate change as a national threat. So, we need to start paying more attention to weather, to water, to what we do with our own carbon footprints, because basically, people are going to walk through bullets to feed their families. And that means if these droughts continue worldwide, we're going to see more and more political destabilization. One of the other interesting speakers, and he said essentially, we had, we've had 10,000 years of stable climate with plentiful water, but now, now we're not. And California, I didn't know this, only, has only 25 years of secure water left. They've drained their aquifers that low, 25 years. And it's mainly for pistachios and almonds. Canada has 25% of the fresh water in the world, and the other thing that we have is our Canadian boreal forest absorbs 26 times all the world emissions that are coming out. And what's happening in our boreal forests is they're starting to heat up, and that's leading to death of those trees. And once those trees die, then we're going to have a big problem with, with carbon sink, because where's it going to go? But one of the other fascinating things was, this was a drawing together of academics, of politicians, people in the public sector, and also the private sector. And Coca-Cola was one of the speakers there, and Coca-Cola identified global water stresses as the number-one risk for their company. They have 1,000 bottling plants worldwide, and in order to protect their investors, they have come up with risk management plans about those bottling plants, and what they're going to do in the event that the water runs out for them. So, my message back to council is, it's good that we've got our sustainability charter, it's good that we're doing what we can to protect our aquifers, but I think we need to prepare for events. And one of the ones that we saw last year is when the weather in the spring destabilizes, that affects crops. And once crops are affected, then we're placed in a position where there could be shortages of various, various food products. So, real eye-opener of a conference, and I'm glad that I went, and I hope you guys have a chance to read this environmental bill of rights.
Thank you. Was President Trump there? He could, he needs to hear this stuff.
Yeah, Trump does need to hear this stuff. I agree.
And speaking to the council general from Solomon Islands, and their climate change is very real, they've had two or three islands disappear on them because of the rising water, and so, very real to them, and some of the changes that are happening, and some of their farmers that have been displaced. And you're right, Egypt used to be the number-one grain-producing country in the world back in their day, in the pyramid's day, and it's all dried up, and that's for a variety of reasons, but interesting stuff. Councilor Fox.
Well, following that, I'll talk about Metro Utilities. I left a little envelope on for all of you. And I'm very proud to be a member of the Metro Utilities Committee, where we actually do do a great deal of stewardship with the water. Some people don't like the fact that we've already on Level 1 water restrictions, but that goes back to exactly what Councilor Richter was saying, we need to protect our water, conserve our water, and be responsible with our water. So, that is what Level 1 is starting to do, and the messages are getting out through a variety of programs, including partnership with Global TV, that... out through a variety of programs, including partnership with Global TV, that I think you'll probably see, well, I've seen them already on the news hour and other times when there's a lot of local residents watching. I did also go to tour last Wednesday of the Anisus Island Sewage Treatment Plant and the expansion that's going on there, and it's absolutely amazing. I think it's a $1.2 billion expansion there to deal with growth, and so it's massive. And it's a very, very expensive, the water goes in, gets flushed down the toilet, and it's very expensive to get rid of it through the primary and secondary treatment process, but we do an excellent job, and we're world leaders in that regard as well. So, anyway, there you go.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to other business, and Counselor Arneson. You're going to get your mic on. You have some other business there.
Yes, thank you, Worship. I'm just going to read the penultimate paragraph from the notes of motion. It's about affordable housing. Therefore be it resolved that a future council priority committee meeting be convened to discuss and consider opportunities to create a framework for affordable housing protocols to help to identify specific criteria, policies, and negotiating tools in order to guide negotiations on rezonings to ensure the fair and equitable delivery of some affordable housing benefit through the rezoning process, and further that this policy include an engagement strategy to include staff, developers, the Greater Vancouver Home Builders Association, the Urban Development Institute, as well as other local housing stakeholders and potential housing partners.
Second, moved by Counselor Arneson, second by Counselor Fox. Any discussion on this? See none, I'll call a question. This is on M1. Carries unanimously. And so, back to you, Counselor Arneson. Get your mic back on, there you go. Okay, you're up.
All right. In this case, I think I better read the whole thing, because just the last section probably won't be that helpful. Whereas council has now received for consideration a draft OCP plan for the undeveloped areas of Brookswood Fernridge, whereas many of the developed properties within the undeveloped area are heavily treed and the majority of the township's coniferous forest reserves are located within the Brookswood Fernridge area, and whereas it is deemed necessary and desirable to balance sustainability components with future, sorry, with development to include financial, social, and ecological considerations. Further to the sustainability charter and other township policies, which values include the protection of significant trees for ecological wildlife recreation and aesthetic reasons, therefore be it resolved that council direct planning staff to draft specific criteria in order to provide a framework in which to protect more trees and give effect to the language of the draft OCP, which considerations may include: One, establishing defined percentages of canopy that must be protected in single-family residential developments based on a calculation with respect to potential negotiated formulas such as credits for trees saved, setbacks, and side yard adjustments. Number two, reduced lot sizes with bonus density provisions for tree preservation under appropriate circumstances. Number three, requirement for supplemental plantings in order to mitigate canopy loss under prescribed circumstances on a case-by-case basis. Number four, the utilization of community amenity charges to secure high-value forested stands and habitat areas within developing neighborhoods. And five, all of their best management practices as identified by staff in order to encourage the preservation of existing mature trees.
Moved by Counselor Arneson, second by Counselor Richter. Discussion, Counselor Richter.
I was wondering if we could add an amendment to this one, and the amendment would be to add number six, which is identification of major significant tree stands in the OCP area, in the Brookswood OCP area. So, I would make that amendment.
Okay, second to Counselor Arneson. So, I'm going to open up amendment one. Discussion on the amendment.
Yeah, I think the...
Or, sorry, you speak to, you made the amendment, Counselor Fox.
I mean, establishing the defined percentages of canopy is good, I think we'd need to do this, but I think we also need to understand now where the existing stands are that provide this canopy. So, that I would see as actually a first step, but I'll add it in as number six.
Counselor Fox.
I'll let Counselor Arneson speak, because it's her motion, I'll speak after her.
This is on the amendment, this is on amendment number six, so...
I can speak to the amendment, actually. I think that that's a really good idea. So, my understanding in talking to staff was they were anticipating at the neighborhood plan that stands of trees would be identified, so they're going to do a more integrated approach to look at a neighborhood. So, it would be, from my perspective, creating a grid in which you could understand where the existing significant trees were, and then work within that context to make sure that the developments that were being proposed to the degree that it were possible and appropriate to be able to use that information to inform, I'm going to call, the design of that development. So, you can put it in the OCP, I think it just strengthens what the intention is. And I just would also say that the whole intention of this is to create what I call a toolkit for staff to be able to work with proponents, because we do have, hopefully, when it's endorsed, the tree protection bylaw, but this creates more definition, I think, and some certainty in areas wherein an OCP is rather broad, and this actually creates a more detailed approach and analysis as to how this can be undertaken, because I think there's a lot of uncertainty potentially with, well, what would that look like? And so, yeah, I would support that amendment.
Thank you. So, on the amendment, I'll call the question on the amendment. Carries, counsel long opposed. So, now the motion as amended is on the floor. Any discussion on that? Counselor Colley.
Thank you. I'm just, for clarity, I guess, trying to understand if this is meant to go into the OCP or be supplementary to the OCP? So, I feel like we might get some more information from the public hearing process that we're taking on this week, and some other feedback that's coming in from members of the community. So, I'm going to maybe move a deferral on this until after the OCP has had third reading, and then I'm happy to come back and revisit it. If this is meant to be supplementary, I don't want it to die, but I think that there might be better context or different context after we've heard from the public on this process. So, I'll move a deferral on that.
Moved by Counselor Colley, and second by Counselor Whitmarsh to defer. Any discussion on deferral? I would say I agree with that, I think it's, you know, there's certainly some good points, and I'm reading through it, and I'm, without going comparison with the plan, there are some things that are very familiar that I've read in the plan, but I think we should look at the plan, go through the process, and then certainly bring this back. Counselor Richter?
Yes, so if we're dealing with this after third reading, will that mean it's coming as early as July the 10th?
I think it's after consideration of plan, so...
That was the motion.
That wasn't the motion.
So, it's in the motion?
It is not in the motion.
No, it was after consideration of plan, it'll be after fourth reading, so. Anyways, it's, I would think after consideration of the plan, supplementary. Is that your comment? Okay, Counselor Fox?
Yeah. I think that the deferral is the right way to go here for a couple of reasons. Number one, there's a couple of points in here that a lot of people seem to have difficulty with, and I referenced number two, reduce lot sizes with bonus density provisions for tree preservation under appropriate circumstances. That provision in the draft updated OCP seems to be one that has a lot of people concerned, and has certainly, we've received a lot of feedback about 4,000-square-foot lots just for the preservation of trees and so on and so forth. So, I think there are some elements that need a little bit more discussion, feedback at the public hearing before we can actually, I think we can actually say that that's the way we're going to go, because if the 4,000-square-foot lots with a tree preservation bonus density provision is going to be put in there, that's fine. If it's not, then I think we need to know that in advance of accepting this. I think that the intent here has value, there's no question about it. I think if the discussion's going to go on between staff and the public and whomever else at the neighborhood plan level, it would help to have them, help for them to have a landscape perspective, what the stands of trees are, what bonus, or not necessarily bonus, but what opportunities there are. And I think you used terms like, such as credits for trees saved, what could credits for trees saved look like, and so on and so forth. So, maybe, you know, as part of that report. But we're, we've got some time to work on that, I see we, the staff, have some time to work on it. And the other thing is, quite frankly, I don't know if the plans, the OCP updates can even pass. We could be back to the 1987 plan. And, you know, this could be, this could be for naught. So, I think what we have to do is wait and see what fourth reading brings. In terms of this, I know that some people would be very happy if the 1987 plan was to be accepted, others would shudder. And so, I think we have to wait and just bide our time and do our due diligence, and bring it back at an opportune time, once we know what direction we're traveling.
Thank you. Counselor Arneson.
Yes, thank you, Worship. Well, I appreciate the feedback from council, as always. My thought about a couple of things, I just want to underline the fact that these are discretionary, these are not necessarily things that have to be implemented, they're on a case-by-case basis. And so, some of them say that, but I just want to put that forward, is that really is the intention of this, that staff be given the appropriate tools in order to work with the proponents at the earliest possible stages, once enough information is known. And just further to number two, they reduce lot sizes with bonus density provisions for tree preservation under appropriate circumstances. When I look at that, and I understand that there are a lot of people that are concerned about 4,000 square feet, and personally, I would prefer to take out the 4,000-square-foot reference and have it entirely, or at least the majority of the decision, based on what the actual situation was vis-à-vis the trees. So, I think it's too prescriptive, from my perspective, to say, you know, 4,000 square feet, because why wouldn't it necessarily be two? I would rather have staff who are knowledgeable be in a position to say, "We are going to balance these things," and maybe it's 5,000 or 6,000 square feet, or, you know, maybe it's something else. But I think that, to me, that that language is not off-putting, because it says "under appropriate circumstances," and so that takes it out of the realm of a cookie-cutter approach. And so, there has to be the right checks and balances in that situation. I'm happy if council wants to defer this until it's time as there is an actual OCP, but really, it was put forward as a tool to help the process in order to protect more trees.
Thank you. See, no further discussion, I'm going to call the question on M2.
Is that the deferral?
On the deferral, sorry, the deferral, yes. I apologize. I was enraptured with the discussion, and I lost track of what we're voting on. Anna Carries with Counselor Richter, Counselor Arneson opposed. Okay, so now is there any other business? Counselor, okay, I'm going to clear this queue, because it was full of discussion items. Counselor Richter.
I have a question through you two staff, with regards to applications that have been before council that have taken a long, long time to get from third until fourth. Like, we had one tonight that was, the report came and it said it's been a year and a half since it had third reading, so, but they were working on it. The property in question that I'm thinking of is the one right across from Costco, which we gave the public hearing and third reading on before the last election, so that's like four years ago. Since then, they've had that up for sale, I don't know if they sold it or not. The development sign is still up there, but at what point is a new public hearing needed? Like, four years to me seems ridiculously long. And how many more of these are there in the township? Like, how many more applications do we have that have had third reading, but they, it's been well over two years, or three years, since they had third reading? And should we start requiring a redo of the public hearing?
Back in. Prefer to Mr. Seffy, Mr. Seffy.
Thank you, Worship. The timing of applications proceeding, or how fast they proceed, is really beyond staff's ability to control, it's up to the proponents and the market conditions that drive how quickly a particular developer may wish to proceed with their application. Having said that, I think it is up to council past, I believe, if it's more than a year, typically the clerks note, we refer to the timing of when the public hearing was held, and provides council with the opportunity to advise or to decide if they wish to have a new hearing. I'm not sure if there's legal requirements, I don't recall. Mr. Becken?
Worship, I think our policy states if it's been inactive for one year, then it could go back for a public hearing. The challenge really depends upon the nature of the conditions associated with the third reading that must be met prior to final adoption, and as Mr. Seffy said, the market conditions. The property reference, for example, was actually in the process of being sold, I believe it has been sold, and there were some complications. It's likely that particular property could come back before council for a altered zoning, a different zoning, where they may proceed, choose to proceed. If council were to actually stipulate time limitations on it, that might be theoretically possible, but then we'd have to make sure we have the resources to make sure and police those provisions. So, it's something that's very complicated, and I'm not sure, Mr. Seffy, have you seen other jurisdictions put limitations on the actual adoption, if the process, if the project's actually being worked upon?
No.
Well, I guess the question or the concern that I have is that when we give them third reading, it's approval in principle. And we give them usually third reading with a bunch of conditions attached, and I can see how we have fairly substantial conditions, so it could take up to two years to meet the conditions. But I think four years is pushing the envelope, and don't we, as a community, have reasonable expectation that if they've come forward in good faith and asked for a rezoning, and we've given them approval in principle, that they will proceed with that rezoning? I don't think that's an unfair expectation on our part.
Worship, I understand the expectation, but it's a bit, I suppose, like suggesting that after final reading's been given, that the property will be used in accordance with the final reading. What I mean by that is not that it remain inactive, but that there be some type of use on it. I can understand the concern, but it's a very complicated issue, because it's going to lead to situations where there'll be exceptions and exceptions to the exceptions. If council wishes to pursue it, we could look into it in more detail, but it's something that traditionally has not been done, doesn't mean it can't be done, just has not traditionally been done, and there might be economic consequences to actually mandating it within a certain time period, so for example...
But our community is growing so quickly.
It's other business, it's a question.
It's other business.
I think that property was used as an example, so just let Counselor Richter finish her question, and then we'll move on.
I mean, our community is growing so quickly, and conditions are changing in it, like traffic patterns and parking and all the rest of it, that I really do think four years is a little on the excessive side. So, I'll take Counselor Long's suggestion, because I'm sure he's in a hurry to get out of here, that we, that I ask staff for a report on it. Now, do I need a motion or notice a motion on that?
Are we getting a report on, on what, what is the report on? I've kind of lost track here.
I'd specifically like to know about that property, and why it's taken four years, but I'd also like to know how many other properties are in the same boat.
So, how many properties are third reading past?
Three years, past three years.
Three years, past three years. So, that would be the motion, to get a report back from staff on how many properties are past years. Do we need a motion, or you can take us direction to report back in a memo form to?
Do a memo, Worship, that's just the technical numbers.
Yeah, so we can, we can look that up.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there any other business? Motion terminate?
Termination.
Counselor Davis, termination, Counselor... Councillor Davis moves termination. Councillor, I need a seconder. Councillor Fox seconds it. All those in favor, opposed, carried. In just a few minutes, we'll begin the public hearing. And so it'll just take a few minutes for staff to get organized.